Okay, I'll start the recording now. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Charlton. It's September 8th, 2022, and I want to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Board of Finance. This is a special meeting because of a date change. This meeting was originally scheduled for two nights ago, September 6th, but we were forced to cancel that meeting because the town had technology issues that prevented certain of our board members from joining remotely. And consequently, we didn't have a quorum. So we're rescheduled to this evening, and I want to sincerely thank my colleagues for their flexibility and also thank town personnel for making themselves available on short notice. In any event, we've been on a break for a couple of months. It's good to be back. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we please all rise and unmute your microphones while our colleague Ms. Marmian leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sheila, to the members of the public who have dialed in or joined us on the WebEx tonight, please know that you are muted and will not be heard by board members, and there will be no live public comment during tonight's meeting. Members of the public are always encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board at the following email: bof@fairfieldct.org. If you do so, please remember to include your name and address as you would with live comment. A little background on our agenda this evening. It includes one substantive item, and that's a status report on previously approved capital projects. Those members of the public who follow our meetings are aware that each quarter we review the status of our annual operating budget, including our budget to actuals and spending projections for the remainder of the year. Capital projects, on the other hand, are not approved annually in a formal budget process. Appropriations are approved individually by this board and other elected bodies throughout the year as projects come up. And we've historically not had a periodic process to review status and spending on all open capital projects similar to what we do for the operating budget. So that's a process we'll start this evening. In the future, we'll plan to incorporate this review as a regular part of our quarterly meetings. We have the separate agenda item dedicated to this topic tonight, though, simply because it's our first time doing it, and I anticipate it will take longer to review than it will on a prospective basis. In many cases, substantial time has passed since these projects were approved. Many of them are multi-year efforts in various stages of completion. Some have yet to be started. We've welcomed new board members since some of these projects came before us. I expect we may need to jog our memories on some of the projects as well as refresh our understanding of the town's process, and I am sure we'll have questions that require follow-up. Going forward, as we get into the mode of just reviewing updates to this information quarterly, I do expect the process to become routine enough to allow us to review it as part of the quarter end. And I hope it will also serve as another way for members of the public to have an understanding of all the areas where the town's investing and what that debt service line item in the annual budget is actually paying for. The data we'll review tonight is broken out into two parts. Part one relates to approved spending that's being funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. The public may recall that last year, the town received approximately $25 million in ARPA grant money from the federal government. A proposal to allocate that money to various projects was put forth last summer by the administration, and a plan was approved last September by vote of this body as well as the Board of Selectmen and RTM. So that's part one. Part two of the data relates to capital projects the town finances itself through long-term bonds. And again, those capital projects are reviewed and approved on an ad hoc basis as needs arise. So with that background, we will move to item three to hear an update on approved capital projects. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Marmian seconded by Mr. Curly. Thank you. Okay, so the backup for this item is posted online, and we'll begin with the schedule of ARPA projects, which starts on page one. We'll then move to the schedule of bonded capital projects, which begins on page three. Mr. Jared Schmidt, the town CFO, is here to help take us through these documents, and I'd like to thank him for putting this information together. To start, Mr. Schmidt, perhaps you can begin with the ARPA project schedule and take a minute to walk us through how this document was prepared. For example, help us understand how the numbers are derived. Do they come from the accounting system? Is there another reporting tool that's used? What's the basis of accounting? Is this cash that's been spent? Or do the reported amounts include dollars that have been committed and encumbered? How does the town report the monitoring status of the projects, et cetera? If you can just give us some general background, that would be helpful. And then after you do that, I'll ask for any broad-based questions from board members about the schedule, the town's process, et cetera. And then following that, we can take any questions from the board on specific line items. So if that, if that sounds okay, Mr. Schmidt, can you kick us off?
Sure, I can start it off. And good evening, everybody. I just, before I get started on that, I just wanted to give some context for what you have because we had hoped to, you know, prepare some more detailed information, more comprehensive information. And, you know, we're planning on doing this and presenting this information as part of the quarterly meeting, as the chairwoman had said, or possibly as a part of the capital projects workshop. And then when we were heard that, that, that the board wanted to take this up on the 6th, I had, I had advised the chairwoman that it, it just wouldn't be enough time to put together something that was useful or, or like I said, as comprehensive as we would have liked because we were just beginning the preparations for the capital plan, including the updates to the existing approved capital projects. So I just want to put that out there as, you know, just so you have some context as to why, you know, there may be some, some gaps. There's not as much information as, as, you know, we had hoped to provide. But we will, we'll make do, and I'll go through what we have right now. So we'll start with the, the ARPA since that's the first page of your backup here. This is actually taken from a little app that we created specifically for the ARPA projects. This was, these are a little, a little more concrete, discreet just in terms of, you know, we, we know where the funding's coming from. We know that they've all been approved. So there are, you know, there, there aren't, there aren't these question marks about, you know, is this a, is this a state grant? Is it a federal grant? Is it, you know, where, where other spots where the money might be coming from? So, so we put together, I worked with our IT department to put together a, a web application, and it was, it was going to be more for internal purposes and for internal planning and, and reporting, but decided that it could be used in this setting as well. And so the information comes from, and this was up just for background, this one, this particular information was updated at various points in time, but for the most part was done about a month ago that the department heads had updated this. Some of it may be more current than others. So it's an, it's an app that they can go online and, and fill out, update, and the financials that are in here, the financial information that's in here comes directly from Munis, where we track all the financials for these grants and everything else that we do financially. So if you remember, we received about almost $25 million from the federal government from the ARPA program, split out over two years. And with these, all of the, we made a presentation during the late, I'll say, late summer last year and had, had all the projects approved by the boards. And so we were off and, and tried to delineate the ones that we could do in the first year, given the first tranche of money that we were getting, and then save some for the, the following year as well. This money has to be, has to be obligated by the, by December, the end of December 2024. So, and I, I feel like we're in a pretty good place right now where we are. I don't know if anybody has any questions on, on any of the specific projects that are, that are in here. You know, some of the, some of the more notable things are the Body Cam, Dash Cam. That's, that's all as the, as the note suggests, the police have, have received all of the, the equipment.
So Jared, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but I, I do want to, we, we can go line by line for questions from the board. Is there anything else you want to tell us about the process?
About what process?
Just, so, so this is, I think you told us you have a web-based app. The information that's in here in terms of dollars is from Munis. The department heads are, are updating status themselves on a periodic basis? Do I understand that?
They have that ability to do that. Yes. Yeah.
All right. And can you just?
And we, and I did this, you know, like I said, I did this for ARPA because it's more, you know, these things are, they're, they're simpler. They're simpler than capital projects, which may be at different stages of approval. And again, there may be, there could be multiple types of, or multiple sources of funding. This was, you know, this, this is more discreet and, and, you know, I think more suitable for an app like this.
Thank you.
What information, Madam Chairwoman, Jim Walsh, could you, could we put up the forms so that people from the public are watching? We could follow along on, on the WebEx while we're talking about them?
I can share my screen.
That'd be great. For, for any of the document we're talking about, I would appreciate if you could put it on the screen, please.
Yeah, we, let's, let's try it, Jim. I just, my only concern is that, that the words might be a little small. So if it's not very visible on the screen, this is available to the public on the website and there, it's page one of the posted backup if anybody needs to see that, but we can try it and see if it's, if it's visible. I do want to make sure I can see, see you all as well.
Do you have the ability to zoom in on it a little bit? Yeah, I can, I'll blow it up as much as I can without it getting cut off.
That looks great.
Okay, yeah, that looks all right. So let's, um, so thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Walsh. So in terms of overall, and before I, I open it up to the, the board overall, I just, one quick question for Mr. Schmidt. I was reminded when I looked at this and looked at the, the total amount of it that when this was approved by the RTM, $450,000, I believe, for one project, I believe it was related to the Fairfield Museum, was removed from the final approval. And if I look at the total numbers on here, it doesn't appear that, it, it appears that it's just short of our grant by that $450,000. So has, and just broadly, between that and there look like another, it looks like there's another few projects here that possibly are completed, and there are funds left over. So has the town, has there been discussion about how that, how those dollars will get reviewed, and have there been any discussions about reallocating the money that was cut by the RTM a year ago?
So as you can see, in, in terms of the 450, there hasn't been any serious, any, any detailed conversation about how that money would get spent. And as far as the, any of these projects that may have leftover money at this time, it's a little, it's too early to tell, and a lot of the amounts are going to be really small at this point. You know, the, I think it'll be, we'll have a better sense, I would say, maybe a year from now. How much is, is going to be left over in total? So then we can, you know, we might, we may be able to cobble together enough for, to make a a substantial dent into either adding to one of these projects or, or another project. So it's, it's a little early to tell right now and a little early to, I think, to have those conversations. We're, we're always open to suggestions.
We didn't reallocate the $450,000 short story, and you don't plan to, you're, you're saying the town doesn't plan to do that until maybe?
We can't do that without your, we can't do that without your approval.
Understood, understood, but you would put a proposal for us, before us, right? So that's not on the horizon, is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay. And, and the reason I'm asking that obviously is as we, you know, we're going to be moving into the capital planning process soon, so it's just, just helpful to understand some of those details in, in that entire context. Okay, so in terms of any other overall questions, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, based on that extra $450,000, I mean, that we have plenty of uses for $450,000 with some of the toxic?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know about anybody else. I can't hear you very well.
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, it would appear to me from some of our previous discussions, and I guess ones that are coming up, that $450,000 can be kind of a drop in the bucket compared to some of the expenses we're going to have on the toxic cleanup at various sites around town and possibly some projects concerning the replacement or corrections that are needed at the Penfield Pavilion because of the spread of this toxic fill that was done down there. So to me, it seems as though we should at least have some discussion at some point that maybe some of that money should be reserved, the extra money towards reducing those costs as we hear them. So, you know, I, I will tell you that where I'm coming from, I'm not looking for adding new projects other than to help the taxpayers of this town pay for this cleanup, the problems that were caused, you know, during the previous administration. So I'm just telling you, that's where I'm coming from. I, you know, any money that's there, I would like to use for that.
And, and I'll, I'll say that we're, we are definitely happy to consider that and will be, as you know, and as the board knows, and has been informed in the subsequent or, or in previous quarterly meetings that we, there is going to be a surplus from last year, and we'll get to that in the quarterly, but at some point, we will put before you a proposal of how to use, you know, how we think that, that funding should be used, that surplus should be used in certainly including the, including the fill pile or FEMA issues with the Penfield Pavilion. And so we'll, we'll definitely take that into consideration when we, when we come forward with that proposal. And I, I don't know if you all were following it, but there was a presentation on Penfield and the fill pile. I'm going to say last week, but I could be wrong. And so one of the things that we talked about very briefly, but, and it, and it's probably more up your alley for the Board of Finance, is, you know, really tracking that, that funding separately and coming up with different pockets of money, in particular, five, you know, five, five pockets of money that we would be tracking and accounts that we would be using to, so that you could see, you know, what's being spent on Penfield construction, what's being spent on Penfield remediation, what's being spent on the general fill pile sites, the fill pile itself, so that we can, you know, break the funding out in that way. And so, you know, we, we look forward to coming to you with a proposal about how, what sources we're going to use to fund each of those needs, each, each of those five areas of need.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Schmidt. And, and yeah, I think the, you know, unlike some of those other sources of funds, that, you know, the, the thing that's unique about these funds is they do have an expiration date on them. And although they're two years away, it's two years away. Obviously, some planning has to go into making sure that we use the money and don't lose it. So we look forward to that update. Mr. Matola, did you have a question?
Yeah, kind of was just going to say what Mr. Walsh just said a couple of minutes ago. I, um, my, my druthers, I was, I, I did hear the presentation a week or so ago, Jared, on the fill pile, and I think we have about $7 million stashed away to deal with some of those issues, and obviously, we're going to need more money. And, you know, if we have a chunk of change left over from the ARPA funds, but I, my, I, I would, my preference would be to, to use those funds for the fill pile cleanup. But certainly, we'll keep an open mind and we'll await more details from the administration. And just one other thing, and not, I don't think I'm jumping the gun because we're on one issue here, but, you know, you, you already have just for all the park stuff, the Melville, Lincoln, Dover, Highwood Park replacement. You know, we have about around a hundred, over $100,000 of funds not used. So, you know, not just, it's not, it's not going to be chump change. I, I don't think it will be, but, but who knows? Time, time will tell. So I just wanted to point that out. So, thanks.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to, you know, make those decisions too soon because there may be other projects. As you can see, there are, you know, relatively few projects that have been completed in their entirety. And so I wouldn't want to jump the gun and, you know, if there are other projects that may be over budget, you know, I think it would make most sense to use any, any excess money to fund those.
Okay. Well, thank you. That, that's it, Lori. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matola. I can't see everyone on my screen, so, but hopefully I can. Any, does any, any other board members have sort of questions before we go line by line? Okay, I don't see any.
Yeah, Lori, it's Craig. Yeah, thank you. Before we get into the line by line, I just, I guess I just have a general question for you, Jared, in terms of just the numbers that are being presented. It seemed to, I was assuming that this might be on a cash basis. Then some of the other line items look like perhaps they were on an accrual basis, and I, I couldn't determine or, or figure out whether it was one or the other. I didn't know if you had any insight as to what, what we're looking at from a cash or accrual basis.
So I can tell you, on the ARPA funding, this would be, anything that you see that in that second column are the, are as labeled, that those are actual expenditures to date. And the balance?
Meaning cash.
Meaning cash. And, and there could be, what I've instructed the department heads to do when they put something into the status or next steps is to identify if there's money encumbered to put it, to, you know, write it into there. And so, you know, you have a better sense of what's, you know, what's actually been obligated.
Great, thank, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curly. If I could throw out a suggestion, Jared, I, I would suggest that this get reconciled to Munis and include the encumbrances since those amounts are committed. And, you know, perhaps, I, I don't, I'm not suggesting that needs to be done every day, but, you know, for the quarterly reviews going forward, so that this information would be consistent with, not only consistent with what we typically look at for budget to actual, but also those committed numbers are important because those are the ones that in fact meet the criteria, right, for, for use of the grant. So that, that would be my suggestion. Does anyone else have any, any questions on the overall schedule before we go line by line? I don't see anybody, but I have to scroll back and, oh, Ms. Leclerc.
I, it's just a very general question, and I, I just want to ask Jared if he could refresh us on it. This whole, we approved the ARPA funds as a list of projects. Some of them had been already approved projects. Some are little projects that are funds going out to other organizations, but there are some bigger projects here that weren't very detailed at the time. And I was wondering, will those come back to us at any point that are really like what we would normally receive as a detailed explanation of the project?
You approved the, you approved the projects as we presented them. So there, there wasn't any need, there's not any need for any further information on these, except that obviously, as we go through and we give updates on the, on these projects, you know, we'll, we'll go into more detail about, about how exactly that money's being spent.
Because normally, when we approve a project, like on a, one by, one project at a time, we get like a detailed budget on how those funds will be spent. And for a lot of those, it was very vague at the time. They were more conceptual. So I was just wondering, is that data now available that you can share with us?
Do you have some, do you have an example of one of those that's, that's on your mind?
Not really. I just, I was thinking it was some of the bigger projects on here that wouldn't have, like, come to us in a detailed manner.
You know, there's, there's, I, I'll say the non-.
Like maybe the Rooster River?
Yeah, so Rooster River is a, you know, an effort to, I, and I don't, I don't have all the backup in front of me, so I, I don't recall everything that was shared with you, but I can give you one update on that, which is that, that the Board of Selectmen approved the purchase of a property that was part of the, part of the Rooster River detention area. And so that, that's an update, and, and part of the spending for the Rooster River project included the purchase of that property on Villa Avenue.
I think, I think the other thing, and, and Ms. Leclerc, I don't know if this is what you're looking for, but as we go through these, as we go through this quarterly, and we're just looking, you know, prospectively, it changes from quarter to quarter. I expect some of these amounts will be supported by, you know, bids and RFPs that were available when these, when these estimates were put together. So I expect some of the numbers to change, and, and I think there will be an opportunity to get to what you're, you're asking about, which I, I think is appropriate.
Right. Well, I thought that's part of why we approved the funds was so they could go out to bid. I don't think that was available at this, the time of approval.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and they can go out, they can go out to bid, and the, the, we have to follow the same purchasing policy that we would with anything else. So, and anything, any contracts that we enter into would have to go through the Board of Selectmen, you know, assuming that they hit the threshold that requires it.
Right.
So to, so to that extent, there is some more detail, and there, there is more approval that would need to happen. But it's, you know, it's approval of, of the actual contracts related to the project.
Right. It's just that, I guess my concern is that we didn't go through our normal process on all of these projects. And by approving them as a group, I feel like now we haven't done our full due diligence on them, and maybe that we need, I guess, like through our quarterly reviews, you know, more details presented on how the funds are being spent and, and just so we know exactly.
Yeah, and I think that's the intention, is that when we, when we update, when we give updates on these, we will include more detail about how, you know, where it is in the, in the process and, and how, more specifically, how the money's being spent.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, I'll just, I'll just quickly start moving down the list and see if anyone has any questions on these, if that's okay with everyone. everyone. Um, uh, nonprofit mental health, which was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar item, Mr. Curly?
Yeah, I, and, and I appreciate everyone's uh, indulgence. A lot of the, a lot of these items were discussed before um, I was on the board. So I'm gonna ask some questions that I thought about asking in advance, but thought it may be beneficial for the public as well. So I figured I'd do it in a public forum. But on this program, Jared, um, can you just help me understand how the, how this program is set up to work? Who's, who's uh, receiving the funds? Who decides who's getting the funds? Uh, just wanna better understand how this is being tracked.
So, when we uh, presented this, we identified specific nonprofits that would receive the money. Um, and we uh, working with Attorney Baldwin and with the uh, with the recipients of the money, uh, developed contracts for them to uh, for us to enter into with them, so that they are, they know how the money can, how specifically the money is allowed to be spent.
Okay. And, and so with four hundred and fifty allocated to this line item, um, three hundred to date, is the, is your expectation that the one fifty will be distributed based on uh, applications that have yet to be received?
These um, these ones were, they were predetermined entities that would receive this um-
Okay.
Based on requests, you know, as, as we, in preparation for this and uh, in determining where the money would go, we, we went out to, you know, reached out to board members, to the public, to uh, nonprofits and um, and uh, so we, we received requests from different nonprofits in particular. So this one uh, includes uh, Life Bridge is one of the nonprofits.
Yep.
Um, Child and Family Guidance Center is another one, and Operation Hope. So there were three, there were three of them, each equally getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. So it have only two of those three been distributed? Is, is the expectation that the, the one fifty would go to the third?
Uh, that's our expectation right now. Yep. And I, and again, if, if anything changes, um, you know, we'll give you an update on it.
I appreciate the uh, info. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Curly, do you mind if I just ask a follow-up question? I don't know if you were done, but-
I'm done. Thanks.
So Jared, you, on that item, you um, you mentioned that Mr. Baldwin had prepared uh, contracts with the nonprofit agencies uh, laying out how that money that was, was permitted to be spent and presumably that's in accordance with the, you know, the ARPA guidelines. Um, is that the limit of our responsibility? Or do we have any obligation as sort of a grantor to make sure they're doing what, what they say they're doing or what they're supposed to be doing?
Yeah, so we're, we are going to um, get from them regular reports to um, you know, let us know how they're spending the money so that we can, you know, we're, so we're doing our, our due diligence and uh, just ass- assuring us that they're doing it in accordance with the contract.
Okay. And how often do they report to us?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't quite set that up yet. Um, but uh, I envision it being uh, probably on a quarterly basis.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe you could get back to us on that one. Appreciate it. All right. Um, COVID recovery assistance. Does anyone have any questions on that? Mr. Curly?
Sorry. And I, and I won't, I'm not going down every line, I promise. But this one, I imagine, works in a similar way, but maybe the, the, the grants are just smaller. Um, similar questions. How is this getting, um, who's on this committee to decide who's getting what? And um, is the expectation that the one eighty-eight would be distributed based on applications that have yet to be received? I'm just trying to understand how this line item is being managed.
This is a, uh, so the COVID Recovery Committee is a successor committee to uh, the previous, um, and there, there was another, a different word in there. It wasn't recovery, but it was similar. And I'm trying to remember what it was. Uh, but a- anyway, there was a, uh, this committee has uh, stayed in place, um, because there was funding that went out during COVID, um, and followed the same process where applications would have to come through the, the committee. They would approve them, um, again, up to, up to five thousand dollars and uh, the money would go out this way. So this is, you know, post-COVID, COVID, COVID recovery. Um, and, and you know, we thought there, there might be a need in talking with, with our uh, Social Services, with Julie DeMarco, that there might be a need to have something in place as a, a backstop uh, for recovery.
And i- is this committee similar to like other committees that the town has formed for other purposes? Is the member, um, uh, the committee members, are they listed on the town website? I mean, I, I, I haven't checked, so I apologize. I'm just trying to understand the program.
That's a good question. I don't know if they're on the, if they're on the town website, but it is a, it's a, an identified committee of uh, you know, specific members. Um, um, and, and it's a, you know, it's a, a committee that has been in operation since COVID started with, I believe, pretty much the same membership. Uh, and I, I couldn't tell you offhand how many are, how many members there are on the committee. Um-
You, you can get back to us on that. That's fine.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it.
Um, if I, if I could just ask a follow-up, and I'm sorry, I, I don't wanna dominate this either, but um, I, and, and I don't wanna be tone deaf and I, I apologize in advance if it is, but I, I, COVID recovery at this point, what does that even mean? Um, you know, we had a point in time where we had businesses that were closed and, you know, people that were out of work and how, wh- what is the criteria? Is, are we still, are we still distributing five thousand dollar grants? And, you know, I, I guess I get back to Mr. Curly's question. Um, you know, COVID is, is still a thing. Obviously, people are still getting sick, but in, in terms of the economic impact, is this, do we still need this fund?
Well, you can see, uh, you know, based on the status of it, there have only been seventeen applications um, that were, that have been approved so far. I, I don't know how many have been actually submitted. Um, but the, so it, it's, a- and I'm sure that there is some uh, document that lays out what the criteria are for um, qualifying. Um, and I can, I can try to get my hands on that. Um-
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want this to be overkill for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I, I, I would just suggest that maybe there might be an expiration date on this fund where if applications don't keep coming in, um, you know, if, if it's supposed to be COVID-related and that was the designation, there might, there might need to be uh, you know, I'm not sure if we would have this running till the end of twenty twenty-four for people applying and, or not. Maybe, maybe that's the intent. I don't know, but-
Yeah, no, I mean, at some, at some point, just like anything else, if, anything else in here, if we, if we see that, you know, uh, a year before the deadline approaches, you know, we see that it's not gonna all get spent, then we will uh, you know, we'll, we'll definitely uh, consider that and consider cutting it off. Uh, right now, there is not, there's not an expiration, other than the uh, the, the ARPA ex- expiration date of twenty twenty-four, December. But yeah, we would, we can uh, we definitely consider that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matola.
Yeah, I was just throw out, maybe Jared, a good idea is to have a deadline to submit an application and that will be your, your cutoff. It's just a thought. Is that where you're gonna have some certainty as to what we can do with these monies? Just throwing it out there. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Walsh, did you have a question?
Jared, this um, these monies is five thousand dollars per household. Um, do we have a better criteria on that? I mean, people who are affected by COVID, medical reasons still, that are lasting for, you know, they're still having economic problems from that. Does that, will that be covered still by this five thousand dollars? I mean, even if they're still having lasting effects? Because, I mean, a similar question could be asked of the Board of Education on their millions of dollars that they have for COVID stuff, which I guess is a good thing for, we should cover during the quarter, um, to ask some of the same questions. I know some of it's for, on their side is for um, students who are still suffering from the lack of education we've provided them during COVID, things like that. Uh, but um, you know, specifically on this item, is it for people who are still affected by, by COVID?
So that's the inten- that, that's the intention. And again, I, I'll, I'll, I'll um, get you, I can get you more information, more details about what the criteria are, so that, you know, that, but that's cer- that's certainly the intention, is that this is to help people who have been affected in some way by COVID.
Somebody gets COVID tomorrow, an elderly person who's really affected by it, they can still file for the five thousand dollars towards housing, utility, medical and other expenses?
Yeah, if they're affected, there would have to be other uh, you know, there's, there's certainly other conditions that they would have to meet in order to qualify. And, and uh, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. I, I would have to uh, get more information for you about what the, what those conditions would be.
Yeah, so if somebody gets it a year from now and still during the period of time we can distribute money, the criteria is still the same, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see those, those criteria changing unless, you know, as, as we just discussed, if we put a uh, a deadline on this, then that would be, that would be it.
I don't see how we're really gonna, I mean, from what I understand, from these paper articles I read and medical things I read, doesn't seem like COVID's going away anytime soon. So this, this would have to probably stay open until the end. I don't see how it goes away until the period of time goes away.
Right. But uh, you know, again, there, there are other, it's not just, do you have COVID? It's uh, you know, do you have, what are, what are your means and um, what are the, what are the needs? And um, so tho- those things would have to apply as well.
Yeah, so I don't see, it's the same question on each of the applications. It doesn't seem to change. And if you got COVID, you know, a year from now.
Right.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fair point. It's just a little odd. I mean, I think COVID is, you know, um, we're, we're clearly in a different situation now than we were pre-vaccine and when there were no treatments. And, you know, I mean, people could, could be impacted, residents could be impacted by, you know, any variety of illnesses or misfortunes that are more significant than contracting COVID or just different than contracting COVID. So I, I guess that's where my question comes from. You know, we had this acute situation at one point in time and we devoted this, this money, which was very appropriate. Um, it seems like it's being distributed slowly. So I guess that's where my question comes from. Not that, not that people wouldn't continue to get COVID, but um, you know, does the original intent of the program kinda still make uh, sense in the, in the broader context, gi- given the circumstances? Uh, you know, I'm sure if we keep the criteria the same, we could have people that would continue to qualify, um, you know, for, for the foreseeable future. So that's a fair point. Uh, but Jared, you can get back to us. Um, Mr. Curly?
Yeah, just one follow-up. Just wanted to clarify, was, is this five thousand dollar amount, is it intended for individual homeowners, residents or, or, you know, renters, I guess, as a resident? But, or, or is it meant for commercial, like a restaurant that struggled or if they needed to buy extra equipment to fit out a more COVID-friendly environment? I, I just didn't understand if it was meant to be for residents or for uh, commercial applicants?
Yeah, this is, this is more on social services for individuals, not for commercial.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll keep moving down. Any uh, any questions on, on the next one? Plan of Conservation and Development? Okay. Downtown Resiliency Project? Mr. Curly?
Yeah, I, I actually don't have a question about the numbers. It's pretty clear that they're just starting the project, but just help me understand what permeable surfacing means in the downtown area. Like what, what is the, what is the um, project?
Uh, the project is uh, putting s- uh, certain sur- permeable surfaces on uh, whether sidewalks or um, you know, pedestrian areas, uh, so that the water um, flows through and it's not um, you know, flows, flows through the surface and, and goes down into the ground rather than uh, run, rather than uh, going out as runoff into the sewer system.
And so like, for example, the Sanford, Sanford uh, street is, is uh, Sanford Road is um, it uh, often flooded and hard to walk around, uh, pedestrian traffic. You're end up stepping through puddles. That's what this is meant to uh, mitigate?
Right. So, yeah, so in tho- in those cases where the normal flow of, of water goes, this would help to divert it because it would be going into the ground instead of into those uh, those typical areas where you would see it flowing uh, between the catch basins and, yeah.
Got it. Great. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walsh?
Curly, we've, you, you touched on it, but just so you know, we've had presentations. Um, and Mr. Curly in engineering could probably assist you. Uh, but there's been a huge flooding problem. Anytime we have a ton of water that hits at one time, the bottleneck of these um, drains, uh, the drainage system downtown can't handle it. And therefore it backs up and businesses all along Post Road and where the community theater is, it goes over the top of the sidewalk and into their businesses. So they're just trying to figure out a way with this money to divert water so it doesn't go into the system early and then clog it up. So it's, it's complicated. They've tried to come to us for a number of years of solutions. They didn't want it to, the Sherman Green, um, where they put detention wells below the whole Sherman Green. Uh, this is just the next step. Uh, and it starts all the way up from the, almost where the train station is and all the way down. So I'm just trying to give you a little bit, a bit more information. So, um, they're gonna see how it works.
Thanks, Jim. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Uh, any questions on uh, body cam, dash cam, tasers, the police equipment? Greg?
Yeah, sorry. This, this isn't about the, I think the description's pretty clear. This is re- this is about the numbers. Um, so it, it talks about having received all the equipment, um, but it looks like we've only spent seven hundred out of three point seven, seven hundred K out of three point seven million. So I guess I'm trying to understand just the, the numbers there. Um, uh, if, if you could help me with that piece of it.
Yeah, and so um, we can have the uh, police talk more about this when uh, at a later date, but um, they, this is a, a multi-year contract that we entered into with uh, with Axon. And so the uh, not all the payment was happening at once. It was gonna be over time. Um, and so the, the, that, that's why you see a large balance there.
Got it. So we have all the equipment that we would need, but I guess is, is um, Axon providing other services and there, that those services would be rendered over time?
Yeah, not, not so much other services, but a commitment to uh, replenish the um, the equipment over certain periods of time, depending on whether it's a body cam or dash cam or taser. Um, they'll be replaced every so often. Um, and so, so we're, we're not, we're not giving them all of the, all the cash, all the money upfront.
Got it. Okay. So when, when the description talks about us receiving all of the equipment, I guess all of the equipment for a schedule, sounds like we're gonna get more equipment down the road.
Yeah, and it, it may be that uh, I don't, I don't know all the details of it, but it may be the case that they received this, so this in- initial um, equipment. And so the idea is that the, there, there will be another round of equipment. Let's say, I believe it was the um, body cams were every two and a half, every two years or two and a half years, that those would be automatically re- replaced. So uh, we get the initial ones and then after two, two and a half years, we get another round of them. So I, so uh, um, every, all of the uh, police are outfitted with these uh, in this first round. And then they would be once again outfitted uh, two, two and a half years from now when we get the uh, um, that second phase of them, not second phase, but the uh, updated um, equipment.
Great. Thank you, Jared. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't this to cover all the equipment, the software, the storage of- Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't this to cover all the equipment, the software, the storage of. Storage facilities for the video and all that stuff that will basically cover us for ten years? I don't know if some of the stuff was leased or. I don't know what it was, but basically the money when it's spent during the ARPA period, but you have up to five years to spend it, correct?
Yes, we have through twenty twenty six to actually spend it.
During the contract that you guys signed would cover that equipment, but it's really all the equipment, everything, the storage, the software. Upgrade to the software.
Upgrades, yeah.
For ten years, right?
That's right. Yep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh, fire station rehabilitation, any questions on that one? So I I just had a quick one, Mr. Schmidt, so this was a half a million dollar project and I'm I guess. I'm trying to recall what this covers, is is that? We've often gotten appropriation requests for us for these types of things that are. Not comprehensive to a project, it's just sort of a down payment on doing whatever we can do. For five hundred thousand dollars at the fire station, I don't remember what this one is, but it looks like we've between the encumbrances and what's been spent, we've spent a good amount so far, so. What? You know, what what is this, was this a full project cost or was this just, you know, money that we would use to start spending on some of the things that needed to be done there?
If you remember, there was two years worth of funding for this, for the for the bathrooms. And and the exhaust that was in the capital plan and.
This is part of the larger, this is some funding that's being used on a larger project for the fire station?
Yeah, I I I don't, yeah, don't. Don't quote me on this, but I I believe it was not just a larger project within one fire station, but may may cover multiple. I don't, you know, we we can have the chief.
Okay, that's fine, I know, I assumed there would be follow ups, so maybe for a follow up on this one and ones like it, if we are. If we have a project where the ARPA funding is is, you know, part of the funding mechanism for a larger project. And we're getting an update on it, you know, fill pile would be an example, I'm sure there'll be others. It's I I think the way to talk about that is to talk about the project versus the ARPA piece and. And and just see how that funding fits in, I I didn't think five hundred thousand was was all that we needed there, I I know we've gotten various. You know, various requests on that one and it's been in the waterfall, so. You know, when we do get an update, it would be good to understand what the scope of the full project is and and what the five hundred covers and. You know, what other funds are being applied there.
Okay, so I can give you a little bit more, I'm looking back at the the ARPA presentation that we did. So it looks like there's renovation to administrative offices on the second floor Reef Road. Firehouse renovation of first floor living spaces on Reef Road Firehouse. Instruction of storage addition to Reef Road Firehouse, ADA compliance. Apparatus maintenance facilities being renovated. And renovations to Jennings Road Living Spaces.
And that was all gonna be covered by this five hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's that's what I'm reading here.
Okay, so if when we get an update from the chief next time, again, good to know how the did the five hundred thousand really, you know, did it end up accomplishing all of? What was contemplated in in that original scope, that that would probably be helpful. And the other thing, I I had this question later too, but we mentioned ADA here, we also had money for an ADA consultant somewhere else. But then we had the Silver Petroselli report that identified a bunch of ADA issues and we approved funding for that back in May, so. It just be helpful to understand if we've got, you know, pockets of things that might be. You know, duplicative or if funding is in multiple pieces. You know, so again, on something like this, be good to look at it at a project level. Next time we next time we get our update. Okay. If there's if there's no other questions on fire station, anyone? Phil Pyle? Mr. Matola?
Hey. So Jared, I I see in the notes here, it says. That the ARPA is the only remediation funding source that has an expiration date on it, we should begin hitting this account with remediation expenditures. Until the funding is exhausted, so. So we haven't touched this account yet, it's been about a year, can you? And if you can't tell me now, you can let us know later, what what have we spent on? The fill pile from other sources since this funding was approved? Do you do you know?
I haven't looked at that, no, I I don't, I don't know, we'd have I'd have to go back and.
Take a look, all right.
Yeah.
But it is a recognition that we do need to start using this money, right?
That's right, yep.
Okay, all right, all right, at some point, if you can put that together, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola, Mr. Walsh?
Jared, based on the presentation you recently made. There's not gonna be a problem spending this million dollars probably in the next year, right? It's gonna fly out the door, right, real fast?
Yeah, this isn't, it's not gonna be a problem at all. And we we would include this funding as as I mentioned to you earlier, our plan for. You know, the the different sources of funding for fill pile and the different purposes, this is this would be included in there, so yeah, it's not gonna be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Senior Center renovation? Anyone? So Jared, I I did have one question, but I I think it may just be the way the numbers are presented here, so we say in the it says in the comments that the design of the bathroom is in the final stages, but the dollars spent show zero. And I guess that's because this is on a cash basis. I mean, so it's it sounds like we've spent some money, we just haven't accounted for it in this format.
Right.
Okay, and then. This is another one, when we when we get get through this next time, I recall that when we. We approved an authorization back in May, which was a whole load of things from the Silver Petroselli report, it included. A number of items for the senior center and it. You know, a bunch of things were identified from that, this eight hundred and fifty was subtracted from, you know. From the the chunk of money that was identified in Silver Petroselli, so again, I I am a little, I think where we have these. Capital projects in multiple places, you know, this is one where. You know, we're we're updating the the ARPA schedule here, but I think what's probably better is to update. You know, talk about the project when we provide the update next time, and that's all I had on that. All right, and then I was just also, the next one, deck and patio behind senior center. It just based on the comments, do you know if this is done at this point?
I don't, no, not offhand.
Yeah, it says completion date September first, so I was wondering about. Maybe next time we can get an update on the status and and where the costs landed, it sounds like it should be done by now and maybe we have final costs. Okay. Paving and sidewalk repair? Mr. Curly?
Yeah, I don't think this is something we probably can get into tonight, Jared, but I recognize that. Funding for the paving and sidewalk repair is some's coming from ARPA, some's coming from the operating budget. I'd just be curious overall to get an update on how that is going for the year. I know that the town spent some money to hire the consultant and put together that paving plan, which I I thought was a great. Program, and I thought it was smart to do that, and I'd just be curious, it's at the appropriate time to get an update in how it's going, obviously. Through the summer, we've seen roads being paved around town, which is great, but I'm I'm just curious if at some point we can get a kind of an update on the program for the year and. How that overall spend dovetails back to the sources, whether it be ARPA or the operating budget.
Yep, that's a that's our plan when we present on the, give the update on all the capital projects.
So on paving. And if I understand your request, Mr. Curly, because I do think it's probably worthwhile to get to get that as an agenda item at some point, I think what you're asking for is. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, are you just asking for an update on the funding or are you also asking to say we had a paving plan that we were gonna do X roads in year one and have we done those roads? Are you?
A little bit of both, a little bit of both, I clearly I want to see how what's being done, how that compares to what the plan suggested, right? So I know obviously we saw some inflationary factors impact the cost of. Oil, which affected the cost of asphalt, maybe we couldn't get as many miles of roads done this year based on the funding that we had provided. So I'm curious about that, but but generally speaking, what is the overall spend, knowing that the funding for that spend is coming from different. Buckets, whether it's ARPA, whether it's the operating budget, I'm just curious to know. The overall spend as compared to the overall budget regardless of source and how that compares to the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Jared, we can follow up on that, maybe we'll find it, you know, at the appropriate time, we can have. You know, Mr. Marsili or whoever the appropriate person is, kind of give us an update on the plan.
Yeah, that was, I mean, that was our plan, that's that's what we, that's what I had planned to do later on in the month, to have, you know, have them all available so that they could give updates on this.
Yeah, I just, I guess I don't really view this one as, I mean, I think the paving, the paving plan, we we sort of treat it as a distinct item versus just part of the capital waterfall in the past, we had a whole meeting on it, we had a big joint meeting, there was a presentation. There was a, you know, a long term plan, so that might be a lengthy discussion in the context of a. Of a quarterly meeting or or a capital project summit, so we we can think about it, but yeah, definitely a good follow up, okay. Rooster River Detention Area, questions on that? Okay. I see none. All right, sidewalk, strapport, Southport and Stratfield sidewalks, any questions on that? Okay, Jennings Beach? Any of the Parks and Rec, the playground replacements, questions? Traffic lights?
I'm sorry, Laura, can we go back to the the Parks and Rec playground stuff?
Sure, of course.
I just I just wanted to understand to the extent that the. Projects have been completed and that the spend, actual expenditures were less than the budgeted cost. And John, you pointed this out earlier, that there's roughly a hundred thousand dollars of. Remaining funding from the four projects listed. Jared, is the plan to hold off on reallocating that to a different line item depending in the event that something might run over? Would you want to close that out and then carry that on a separate line item as as kind of a surplus available for overage? Or what what are your thoughts on managing that overage?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, I think it's a little early to. You know, to to aggregate that money and and use it for something else, either something new or or not. Because to your point, there may be some other projects that go that go over budget and so. We'd like to keep that there for for a cushion in case we need that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Curly. Okay, did anybody have any question on the traffic lights, looks like that's in preliminary stages. All right. Fairfield Theater Company, I actually just have a just a quick question. Mr. Schmidt, so Fairfield Theater Company and Burr Historical Gardens, those are two small amounts, do those work the same way as the? I'll call them the grants that we gave to the nonprofit agencies, did we have contracts that? You know, specify how they use that and we're gonna get back some sort of. Confirmation or or information as to how they spent the money?
That's exactly right, we had separate contracts for each for each of the three. Nonprofits. The the mental health nonprofits and then one with Burr and then one with the Fairfield Theater Company, right?
Thank you. All right, golf course maintenance equipment, questions? Mr. Curly?
Yeah, as much as I love the golf course stuff, I'm I'm focused on the numbers on this one, Jared, you had mentioned that this was. On an actual expenditures cash basis, I know I I noticed that the note talked about the equipment being backordered. But it looks like the money's been spent, so I just wanted to just ask about that inconsistency.
It's possible that. Yeah, I I don't want to, I don't want to speak about that, I'd I'd rather, we can talk to either Anthony or to. Or we can talk to Peter Grace about that and I can get you more information about why why that is.
That's fine, appreciate it, thank you.
No worries, yeah, I I'm gonna, my suspicion is that there might be an encumbrance in there and if that's the case, I think. You know, it gets back to, I I think these spending amounts should be reconciled to munis so that at least we know they're on a consistent basis, but.
That's my guess too, that it's an encumbrance.
Okay. HVAC. So this is obviously a bigger topic. Mr. Papa George, I see you there, any update on that one?
That is the, so that was the phase one of design phase and engineering phase. The we have not begun that project yet because we chose to wait, instead of putting it out the bid, we chose to wait to use the town's bid for the on-call services for engineers. So we're still waiting to get, I know that came back and it's been, it's in the process of being awarded. So once it's awarded, we'll be able to pull off of the on-call service bid to get the engineers on board for that.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Papa George? On that item? Okay. Thank you. Electric vehicles, electric car charging stations, questions on that item, Mr. Walsh?
Jared, I presume you guys are waiting to purchase the vehicles until the charging stations are installed, is that correct? You're gonna use the charge, you're gonna use the.
Yeah, we're gonna need the charging stations, although there, you know, there has been investigation into purchasing the vehicles, I think even if we wanted to get them now. We we couldn't just because of the, you know, delays in supply of electric vehicles, so, but yeah, we. We we would, you know, I think we're we're wait until the charging stations are up and running.
Cars, you're gonna order them soon so that they'll get them, you know, in the next couple of years?
The cars?
Yeah.
Yeah, the cars. I I don't know that they've located any yet, and we, you know, we can have a more more of a conversation with with Tom Bremer or with John Marsilio. And they can they can provide more detail about that.
Yeah, they can just be prepared to talk about that on how long the backlog is right now, so you know that we're gonna be able to spend the money, I know we have five years to spend it, but I presume that we should order the car soon if we're gonna have a charging stations in the parking lot. In the next year.
Yeah.
You can just have Tom be prepared for that at the the meeting, thank you.
Will do, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, other questions on that item? Okay, talked about Burr. Any questions, seems self-explanatory, high intensity wave and erosion damage and resilience study? No questions, okay, townwide guardrail and fencing, questions on this one? So, Mr. Schmidt, I actually have a question on this one because I. Is this? Is this money being combined with other money in a larger project because we have. Because we have, we have an additional authorization from March 2021 for the exact same dollar amount and the exact same description. So is this a $400,000 project? Or was this meant to pay for the thing that we authorized in March? And are we going to deauthorize the one from March 2021?
Mr. Hurley has, has spoken about this in the past, and I know that this is an ongoing thing. It's not like, you know, there, there are, there's a lot of need for this kind of work to be done. And so, you know, the $400,000 that, that's been approved is not enough to do everything that needs to get done. So we're, you know, this, we, we saw this as an opportunity to do a little bit more than what had been done in the past. And so we put the, put the $200,000 into here. But there's beyond what this and the previous 200,000 is paid for, there's going to be more work that needs to be done.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that item? Okay. Town and BOE Fiber Optic Network. Questions? Seems explanation is self-explanatory, I think. Okay, ADA consultant, Mr. Schmidt, I, I mentioned this before, just a follow-up item. I wasn't sure why we still had an ADA consultant here. We subsequently had, I, I think this list was approved before the Silver Petroselli report came out, and I recall that they identified ADA issues in our facilities and even put, you know, a bunch of those got put on sort of an emergency, high priority spending authorization that we approved in May. So it'd be helpful to understand if that eliminates the need for, for this item or what this item is now intended to be before.
So this, this could, and, and that could, there could be some, there, it's possible that there's some overlap. My understanding was that this consultant was gonna advise us on, on other issues too, not just physical, you know, physical needs of the facilities, but you know, maybe it's an auditory issue or maybe it's a site issue on websites or, you know, it, it could, it could run the gamut of, of different things, not just the physical buildings and, and the needs, needs for ADA compliance in physical buildings.
Okay.
I'm not saying, I'm not, again, I'm not saying that there's not overlap, but.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
The other needs.
Yeah, and you, you know, you can get back to us. Who, who actually owns this line item? Who, who would be the one to hire the ADA consultant on the types of, for non-building issues and the types of things that you just discussed? Is that an HR?
At the ti, at the time it was, it was, yeah, I think this was, this was raised by the HR director. Yep.
Okay. All right, so maybe we could just get a follow-up on that one next time. Mr. Walsh, did you have a follow-up on this item?
Oh, bad chairman. Uh, no.
Jimmy, I'm not sure if you're speaking, but you're spotty, just so you know. Okay. Diversity and Inclusion Consultant, questions on that? Hybrid Meeting Technology, my favorite topic. Looks like we are still trying on that one. Anything to add there, Jared?
Not really, I believe we, I believe since this was written in here, I believe the vendor has been selected.
Terrific.
Hey Jared, I have a question on that. So is that going to be technology used in various places throughout the town, including the Board of Ed conference room, to your knowledge? If you know?
My understanding is that there are going to be four or five different rooms. I think, I think there are, I believe that there are two and that are in Board of Ed facilities, but not, I don't believe that they're in their, their main conference room there.
Okay.
But we can get, I can get you those details.
I'm going to throw this out there, Jared, and, and I think that Mr. Peterson and Angelus, they're here. I'm going to ask them just a couple of questions first. The, the Board of Ed, you have hybrid meetings, is that correct, Angelus and Jeff?
The Board of Ed holds in-person meetings.
Everything's in person? And so there's not the ability to do a hybrid? You don't, you don't do that then, is that correct?
It, it has not been our, we have not needed to do hybrid meetings. We have done occasional full, for full virtual meetings, but we have not needed to do any hybrid meetings.
So you don't have, you don't have the public join, do you have the public join remotely?
On, on occasion, but recently we have not been doing that because we have a, a full audience participation. So, because we're in person. But in, in the past, we have had both call-in and in-person comments. But the, but our board has operated in largely in-person since August 2020.
Okay. So I, I thought, and I could be totally wrong about this, that we were required under the state statute to provide hybrid meetings. Maybe I'm wrong about that. I, I, I guess my, here's my question and concern, I'm throwing it out there. We're going to need reliable technology at the Board of Ed Conference Room moving forward. And I hope that this hybrid meeting technology is going to consider that because otherwise, I think our board's going to have to decide that we're going to have to meet somewhere else, which I think would be unfortunate because that's a great room. And I, I just think we need to put our heads together to figure this out going forward because, you know, we wasted a lot of time the other night. We didn't, we weren't able to have a meeting. I'm not blaming anybody. And I, and I asked what, what the Board of Ed was doing because it's my understanding that, and, and I, it was a wrong understanding. I thought you were having hybrid meetings and you weren't having any issues. So I apologize if I misunderstood that. So I, I'm just throwing it out there. I, I, I think we need to have the ability to have hybrid meetings. I, I thought the state statute required that. Maybe I'm totally wrong about that. But, you know, we, we need to put our heads together to, to try to figure this out. Because we're going to be meeting, I think, at Old Town Hall for a quarterly review meeting. We're doing that because of the technology. And I'm going to tell you this, that, that's not an ideal room to meet. So it's a nice room, but it's not big. But we're going to have to do that because we, we can't take the chance of going over to the Board of Ed Conference Room. And for, for legitimate reasons, I couldn't make the meeting for health reasons this week. I had to join remotely. That's the whole reason why we're setting up hybrid, but we weren't able to do it. So, again, I, I sound like I'm complaining a little bit, but we need to figure this out. Board of Ed people, you want to comment? Not casting aspersions on anybody, Garrett, or certainly not on you or the administration, but we do need to figure this out, so.
You know, don't, don't hold me to this, but I'm looking back at the, the description of this money and it, it did include at the time, the conference room at Board of Ed, Ed Building. I don't know if that's still the case or not. And that, but it al, it also says that there are other rooms identified at, at a school, so.
Jared, if you like, I can jump in there. I don't remember off the top of my head all the locations, but I do know the Board of Ed Conference Room is one, the Ledlow High School Lecture Center is another room, and the Fire Training Grounds would be a third location. And I believe there's also two locations identified at Town Hall that would make up the five rooms that would have this capability.
Yeah, Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Ed, just to reiterate what Angelus, Mr. Papa George reported. The Board of Ed Conference Room was, my understanding, that was always going to be one of the rooms that was going to have the ability. The town was looking at other sites primarily for the RTM because they break out into committee meetings and they wanted to have the ability to, my understanding was to provide the hybrid option for the committee meetings as well. But as Mr. Peterson reported, the Board of Ed has been meeting in person since 2020. The public has been able to call in during the height of the pandemic. But, you know, we are pretty much back to normal. Members are able to call in if they need to, but thankfully, we've just been in person. And for those choice times where there we can't make it or it's a short meeting, we've just chosen to be fully remote.
Thank you. I, I just, I just want to provide one clarification to what Mr. Matola said. And this is my understanding regarding the requirement for hybrid meetings. And that is a, a policy decision made by the town. So it's, it's not a FOIA requirement, but the policy decision made by the town is that if we are, if we are meeting in person, we need to provide access to the public virtually. So, and, and we just need to provide access anyway. So for example, if the Board of Finance is meeting, we need to provide the ability for meeting participants, whether that be department heads, et cetera, to join remotely. And the public has to have the same access to join remotely as, you know, they have to have the, you know, the ability to join remotely. So that's what drives the hybrid requirement, and that's why we kind of took a while to get back in person. Because we wanted to, you know, we needed to figure that out and make sure that the, you know, the, the quality of, of the, the setup would be there. I think before this evening, we had four meetings, two of them got disrupted because of the technology. So it's certainly not an ideal situation there now. But as I, I did have a, I did speak to Mr. Kelly, Dave Kelly, or by email earlier. And I think, you know, part of the problem is that Board of Ed room setup, it's not a permanent setup the way it is at some of the rooms that are in Town Hall and Old Town Hall right now. So I think it's easy to have glitches when, when the equipment's being set up and coordinated, you know, just in advance of a meeting. So, you know, we will next time meet in Old Town Hall in person so that we can have the hybrid capability and avoid any issues. But, but back to Mr. Matola's point, I think, you know, particularly before we get to budget season. And if, and if we continue to have meeting participants, joint, critical meeting participants, department heads and others joining remotely, we really do need to have reliable technology. So, so I do hope that, that one gets underway soon. Did anyone, Mr. Walsh, you had a question?
It's actually more of a comment, similar to yours. I, I understand that it's not a FOIA requirement, and I do understand maybe the administration, the Board of Selectmen want to do policy towards it. But just while we're waiting for that, as Ms. Vitale said, Mr. Peterson, their system seems to be working great. And until we get the equipment, I don't see why we just don't have live meetings with people that can call in. Still having the same, you know, goal to be hybrid. I don't think we should force hybrid in situations where we're going to be taking away the experience from, from everybody. I think we should have live meetings, and the Board of Ed has proven wildly successful in doing that. And still giving people access to access it by telephone. So I, I, I think it would be my preference that we do that and that we start running our meetings live. And if we can't be hybrid, we can't be hybrid in a, in a decent manner, not being in a small room. But be where the public can attend those meetings. And if we have an interesting meeting that the, many of the public want to attend in person, I don't think we should be stopping having live meetings and forcing the public to go hybrid where they may not be comfortable or may not have the equipment to do so. So I, I just would, would throw that out there. I think the first goal should be live meetings. I think that's what, you know, everybody wants. Being on the format we're on right now is unnatural. It's unnatural. I don't, I would prefer to see all of my members personally in 3D where I can hear them and we're not having, oh, I've left my microphone off or on. Mr. Walsh, you're not close enough to the microphone and I can't hear you and you're going out. I'd rather be in person. And the backup to that being that if I can't, I'll get on my speakerphone. I'll watch it on, you know, Fair TV or whatever, but I'll also just talk on my, on my speakerphone. I'm just saying that because I think it's very important as we're coming out of COVID and, you know, as Chairwoman said earlier, we're kind of coming out of the emergency of COVID and trying to get used to it and live with it, that we, we move forward and get back to, to live meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walsh. And, and just to clarify about the other night, we, we did actually have an attempt to join people by phone, but we couldn't get the audio in the room to work. They, we could hear them, they couldn't hear us. So effectively, they couldn't participate by phone either. And so that, that was our issue. So, you know, it's, it's certainly frustrating. We had a, you know, we had a hybrid meeting in May, which you, you all may remember, Ms. Ms. Trubuco had to drive to the meeting because she got cut out. I was traveling, I missed half the meeting because the audio, the video wasn't working. So it, it has been a bit of the mess, a mess. We do need to make it better. But, you know, I, I agree, in person is ideal. But I, I do think we need to expect that we are going to have meeting participants participating virtually. And, and so regardless of anything else, you know, the reliable technology is important. And I, I know everyone agrees with that, so thank you. Okay, last item, digitizing records. There was no status on this one, but I, I do just have one quick question on this one for Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, who, who owns this? Is this an IT initiative, the record digitization? Or what, where does this sit in the organization?
Yeah, each of the departments is responsible for their, the digitization of their, of their material.
But what's the 120, $125,000 for? We're not having everybody go out separately and enter into different agreements to digitize their records, are we?
Not that I'm, well, I guess it would, it would come up on a case-by-case basis. So if the, you know, if there's a department that, that thinks that they're ready to go, then they would, you know, we'd have a conversation about it and, you know, allow them to proceed. And then that would probably be the, the, the starting point. And then other, other departments would piggyback on that with that vendor and that agreement.
Okay, so it sounds like this one is still a conceptual idea. Maybe, you know, at the appropriate time, we could get an update as to who would, who's, who's going to be spearheading that one? All right. Are there any other questions on the ARPA schedule? At this point? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for taking us through that. So we're going to switch over to the capital project schedule. And this backup is a, the Munis report we all know and love. And for the public, this begins on page three of the posted backup. And Mr. Schmidt, I, after we spoke and you provided this information, I, I realized, why, why don't we start, why don't you tell us what's on here? What's included, you know, in this, in this list of projects? What, what does it encompass? I, I don't think it's comprehensive. I noticed there were a couple missing that had activity recently. So what, what do we have in front of us here?
Yeah, so this should be the, run of the Munis accounts that contain capital projects that have been approved either, either during this past, I think it was the past May, or the year before, and the, and the status of spending in those projects.
Okay, so if something was approved prior to last year, is it included in here, if, if it has activity, or is it just excluded?
Prior to 20, so prior to 2021, would not be in here.
Okay, so we, we have, and this, this may have been, so, and this may be, have been a miscommunication in the request. But we, I think what we probably should have in the future is all of the open capital projects. You know, particularly if they have activity related to them. Um, you know, particularly if they have activity related to them. Uh, there may be some. I I know we, we're all aware there are situations, for example, school projects where. Uh, you know, a project may be completed for some time, but we don't close it out because we're waiting. For a final state audit or something of that nature. So I'm not saying we need everything for for, you know. Long completed projects, but if we have open projects uh that have not begun. Or if they have activity on them, certainly during the year. Um, I think going forward, as we, as we do this review, we should, we should have that on here. So, you know, a couple of the ones I noticed, for example, back in um. Uh, back in June, we approved uh. An adjustment to the waste, to the hardening project, the wastewater treatment hardening project. Uh, that authorization went up to ten million. Um, you know, that's not on here. I noticed the ECC one was not on here. There may be others, so. You know, we don't have to get into it tonight, but I I think going forward, we should make sure the list is comprehensive and and we can talk about that offline. So. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Walsh, question?
Yes, um, Jared, can you just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So this is really for through, for fiscal year twenty through, uh, twenty-two. Which it's, which um, was through June thirtieth of twenty-two, correct?
It sounds like, from what I understand. Authorization date, and Jared, I I don't want to mistake what you said. It's, it sounds like it's based on authorizations that occurred this year or last year. Is that right?
Yeah.
You say this year, are you talking about twenty, the fiscal year twenty-three? So after, after July first?
I think I'm talking about the calendar years, right? So, because we usually do those authorizations in the spring, so it would be. Twenty twenty-one.
Anything that, yeah, anything that was approved during the twenty-two calendar year. And I believe the twenty-one calendar year as well.
Okay, so when I see. Three million nine, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's what was spent, and the, with the way it was spent, it was expended cash, two million, two seventy-five, four twenty-seven, thirty-three. And then you encumbered one million, five twenty-four, five twelve point twenty-one?
Right.
Did the Board of Finance have to approve the encumbrance of the one million five, and did we do that?
Yes, this was uh, I believe this was part of the uh, the three-year plan for DPW vehicles.
Yeah, this was uh, Mr. Walsh, I, I, you may remember this. It's, it was from Fe- in February twenty-one. We had a three-year plan put before us by Mr. Marsilio, and I, and that was a. If I'm recalling it correctly, a catch-up um for DPW trucks. Because we had, you know, not, you know, not kept up to date, so we were going to bond some of them. Typically, we put some of that recurring capital in the operating budget, but we had this bond, and that money um. Uh, was going to be spent over fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. That's what we, that's what we were told at the time. So that three point nine million was a multi, was an authorization for a multi-year um capital. You know, capital spending. That's what I remember on that one. So that would fall into what Mr. Schmidt said earlier. Because it was a, you know, it was a, an a, an authorization from last year. And I think what I'm saying is, I don't care when it was authorized, if we're still, still spending money on something. You know, if we authorize something in twenty twenty and we're still spending money on it, that's an open capital project. And so we should, going forward. What we should be reviewing here is all open capital projects that have activity. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's helpful. I mean, it just might be helpful during the capital thing for Mr. Marsilio to make a presentation of what vehicles he's purchased. And what are on order, and see where we stand versus the plan.
Agreed, because this, this was supposed to be for three years, and the money is almost all spent. It may be um. It may be that some of that money was uh, you know, thought to be um. You know, a future expenditure because we were anticipating. Well, actually, no, it wouldn't have been supply chain issues in twenty, yeah, maybe it would have been. I I think he thought it would take a while to purchase those vehicles and and maybe they all became available. So I'm not sure. We we do need to get that update. But I think in terms of, I just think it's important for the board to understand what we're looking at here. Because I think the next time we do this, there are probably going to be other items on here, because I think there are older. Older capital projects that may still be active, that we're still spending money on, and and they're, they're not here. So. Um, okay, I I just, what I'd like to do on this one is, is if there are any questions. Um, similar to the ARPA schedule on the overall um schedule or the process and what this is. Let's cover those first, and then if everyone doesn't mind, um, I I I'd like to, rather going than order, jump to the, the school projects. So that we can um get Mr. Papa George out of here and not make him sit through everything else. Um, so do any board members have questions on, on what we're looking at here, the nature of this information, or the town's process? Okay, seeing none. All right, so um. So, Mr. Papa George, maybe you could take us through the status on the um, the school projects. I see, I'm going to go uh off the PDF pages on the posted backup, but I, you know, I, I'm seeing, starting on page four. There are two projects there, so I don't know if you, Jared, can flip that. Okay, so rebalance of mechanical systems. And um Fairfield-Ledlow High School building automation. Do you, can you just take us through the status on those two items?
Uh, absolutely. So the rebalancing is, as you can see, it's ninety-two percent spent out. It's still ongoing. There's approximately three to four buildings. I apologize, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, that are still. Being worked on and looked at, but other than that, most of the buildings are, at this point, getting finalized. And in the review process with the engineers and the reports are being written. So we anticipate having those soon. The Fairfield-Ledlow High School automation systems, that bill, that project actually moved quite smoothly. I know we're, we're kind of, I don't want to call it a standstill, but we're waiting for some materials to come in at this point. For some like thermostats, control boards, that type of stuff. Uh, my understanding from the engineers is anything that has a chip on it is a problem, but we are working to get them in as quickly as we can.
Okay, and before I take questions, can you just comment on uh your budget? Do you uh, are you going to stay within the budgets? How are, how are you looking at against the total spending authorization?
Absolutely. We, we are anticipating staying within budget, and we're, at this point, we feel Ledlow has. Possibly has some savings there, and we're also working with UI for some engine, for some value engineered savings. Through uh energy management, so there may actually be a significant, from what I understand, return on that from UI.
Okay, great. Uh, questions from board members on either of these two projects? Okay, seeing none. I'm just flipping down the list. Uh, I think the next school project I see may be on page. Seven, um. And this is the Ber- Ber roof replacement and Fairfield-Ledlow High School bathroom renovations. And this was the, there we go, three point six million authorization?
Yep, so the Burr roof, I can tell you, is completed at this point. I know there was some punchless stuff. Actually, I shouldn't say complete, because there was a couple punchless items that they were working through, again, uh, with some supply chain issues. Uh, OSHA compliant type of equipment, like ladder replacement and that type of stuff. Nothing that's stopping the roof from doing what it's supposed to, keeping the students and faculty dry. And for the most part, is complete. Um, that will also, as you know, stay as an open. EO because of the fact that that is, will require a state audit and before we can close it out and complete that project. Uh, the bathroom renovation has been moving along. It's slow moving. As I had mentioned during the presentation for this project, a lot of this project that we are looking to do is kind of the behind the scenes. Behind the walls types of, and we've actually just completed the cammering of all the lines within the building prior, just prior to school starting. So those are going over to the engineers to be evaluated and looked at to see where exactly we might have to. Do some further investigation or where we can start pulling new lines if needed and moving along on that stuff. So that's kind of where, it was a slow process with the cammering, but we are completed with that step at this point.
Okay, thank you. And I I don't know if you meant, so the seventy-two percent, are we, did you, did you uh. Clarify if we're, if you're expecting to be on budget for that one?
We, we're absolutely expecting to be on budget for both of those projects.
Okay. All right, any questions on that item? Okay, and I think the next one is on page ten. Roger Ledlow Middle School Roof Replacement?
Roger Ledlow Middle School Re- Replacement, again, is kind of in the same boat as Burr. Its majority is complete. We're waiting for a couple of ladders for getting down from lower to higher points on the roof. To come in and be installed. There was a small punch list that was created this week, but we are moving through it. Um, we are expecting to be on budget for it and completed hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Once again, this is a budget, this is a reimbursable project, so it will stay open for the time being until the state knows their audit.
Okay, questions on that item? Okay, and then uh, the next one I see is on page. Twelve, I think we've got the Burr Boiler and the Elevator Modernization at Fairfield-Ledlow High School. Looks like those are not started yet.
The Burr Boiler, I'm going to have to look into why that is not. Does not show anything against it yet, because we did, we went out to our, we went out for an RFP for the engineers. And it has been awarded, so I thought that had been written. I may have, we may have to look at it count and may have a wrong. Link to it in there. So that one has been written. The engineers are working on doing the design and prep for bid for that project. At this point. The elevator modernization, I, my understanding is it should go out the bid either. Late or tomorrow or early next week. That one should be out soon. Um, we anticipate staying on budget on both of those. The Ledlow Elevator will be a, as I said, it'll go out the bid. The, the lead time for elevators and modernization are so long at this point. That we would hope that by getting it out in, by getting it awarded, I should say, by October. We'll actually have equipment in hand and ready to start the project the, the last day of school. Um, we can't even guarantee that at this point. It may even be beyond that because of the lead times. But that's our anticipation working with the elevator companies.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and on the Burr Boiler, um, so, so based on your comment, you were under the. You think something should be at least encumbered for that, right? Because work is started, okay?
Yep, the, the award was done for the engineering services, so I have to look to see why we're not showing anything.
So we have a PO out on that?
We do, so it's, it's probably on our end. Someone probably entered into a wrong account or code, so we'll have to verify that.
Okay, yeah, that, that'd be helpful.
I act, um, Burr Boiler, I am showing on my spreadsheet a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar. EO open, so I'll have to figure out where, twenty-five-nine, actually, so I have to figure out where that is not working.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Papa George from board members? Okay. All right, well, uh, Mr. Papa George, thank you so much for making yourself available. I, I think we forced you to miss a hockey game, if I remember. Um, so apologies, but appreciate you being here, uh, and thank you, thank you again for everything, and we'll see you during the quarterly meeting, I guess.
No worries. Did you want to do the other projects, or?
Are there other projects on here for, did I miss?
I had, I had the uh.
I'm sorry.
H-back project on, so, and I know I, I mentioned.
So that's it, sorry, page sixteen, folks. Um. I missed that.
I know I, I gave you kind of the brief update on that during the ARPA, because some of the money does come from the ARPA for that project. Is that uh, we're, we're currently working with the town. They did the on-call service bid. They have their bids, they're ready to award. But we're working with them to figure out the best uh control over what the pricing is and how to use the on-call service now that we have them available. Once we have that information, we'll be able to move forwards with that. At this point, obviously, we don't have any anticipation of being over budget for that project.
Got it. And do you have um. Uh, and we talked about this a little bit with the fill pile. I, I hope there'll be a mechanism in place to make sure that when we start spending the money, we use the ARPA portion first.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have that one. I also have the uh, I don't know if you have it on your list, the uh Fairfield-Warwick High School Fitzhouse Roof Copy Unit Replacements.
Let me just see, I apologize. Did I miss another one? Uh, which page is that?
I, I apologize. I have my spreadsheet in front of me. I don't have your backup.
I think that's also on page sixteen, Laura.
Yes, it is. There is the last item, okay?
Yes, I see. So that, that again, um, the, it went out to bid. We have an engineer on s- on service now. So we're, we've begun the engineering part of it and the uh bid, bid documents. So we anticipate hopefully getting that out the bid as well soon, because again, lead time for this type of equipment would put us right in time for school getting out to perform this work.
Okay. Right, questions on any of these items for the school projects? Anyone? Okay. Looks like you're actually off the hook this time.
I'll, actually, I'll throw my cell phone at us. If you want, I can go back. We have one more open EO that I'm aware of from twenty twenty-one. Which is the Fairfield Woods Elevator Project that went out the bid and is in the process of being awarded now. We don't anticipate it being over bid, overpriced, but, or over the project amount, but I don't know if you have that one.
Time out. So is that not on, included on this list?
Um, again, I apologize. I don't have your backup in front of me. I have my spreadsheet, which is showing all my open POs for town.
And and that was authorized when?
That was a twenty twenty, twenty, year twenty twenty-one fiscal year, and it was authorized, and it went out to bid. And we had some delays, and with COVID and the shutdown, it got delayed, and we've actually been able to pick it up and start moving with it again. We went out to rebid. Uh, the bids are back on it. We're in the process of awarding. And we hope to, again, get that done this spring once equipment is available.
Um, okay. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, is that, is that in the Munis report that we're looking at?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know if it's on there or not. Um.
Is this is a twenty twenty-one authorization? Seems like it should be based on the criteria.
I mean, if it's not, we can talk about it at a later date.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, again, just want to make sure we have a complete list we're looking at, so um, make a note of that one. All right. All right. Okay, we can, uh, thank you again, Mr. Papa George. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you all for your support.
You're welcome to sit through the rest of this meeting if you'd like. If not, we'll see you soon.
Yes.
All right, so um, we can, uh, there's, there's a lot of projects on here. Um. And uh, you know, uh, obviously, any, you know, any questions, I want to make sure that we get them covered. Um, I think, you know, part of what we're seeing here tonight is that. Some of these questions will serve as sort of a guide for the department heads, so we, we, they know what we're going to need next time. But um, we can just, uh, we talked about the DPW truck. Um. Uh, authorization for three point nine million. Mr. Walsh had some follow-up questions that he wanted covered on that. Were there any other questions on that item? Okay. Um, all right, we went through the school items, uh, paving. I think we. We covered this with ARPA. Uh, we talked about having a paving update. Uh, I'm on page four now still. Independence Hall Office Renovations, five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, questions on that item? Okay. Um. The Townwide Audit and Facility Plan, so that was four hundred thousand dollars. Um. Mr. Schmidt, can you update us on this one? I I, as I recall, there was a quite a bit of money left over on that one, and I thought that it was as part of our Silver Petriselli uh facilities audit that some of the leftover money from the the study was gonna go toward some of the projects that were identified. Do I have that right?
Right, when the authorization was made for the four hundred thousand, um, it was primarily for the audit itself and then uh, any, we s- we specified in the resolution that anything remaining would be applied to the uh, the projects themselves.
So from a process standpoint, do we have to transfer this uh authorization out of here? Si- sim- I mean, I see with the fire station rehabilitation, for example, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We decided to fund that through ARPA, so we have this adjustment in Munis to actually take the au- to, you know, de-authorize it here and move it to Artha- ARPA. Do we, will we need to do the same with the uh townwide facility plan?
I'm sorry, I got distracted for a minute. Um, what was the question?
The question is we have money left over from the townwide facility audit. I believe we were told that is going to be transferred to cover actual projects identified under that plan. My question is, do we need to transfer the money from this appropriation elsewhere?
I I don't think so because, like I said in the resolution, this was a the the use of that remaining money on projects was unauthorized um use under the resolution. So I I don't think any of it needs to be transferred. We we would, well, obviously, any anything that, any projects that we do, um, you know, could be applied and would be applied in the future to this account.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? All right, Police Department, uh, new HVAC. Um. Any questions on this item? No, okay. Um, just one quick one, Mr. Schmidt, this shows um an authorization of five hundred thousand dollars and spending of the exact same amount. Is that possible or or does this mean that it went over budget or how how does that work?
Uh, I I don't know the status of this one. We'd have to talk to police about this and and on these projects in general, these were the these were, you know, any of these capital projects are ones that uh, we had planned to meet with the department heads and get status updates on each of these um and present them later, so I'm I'm probably gonna, I may be less helpful on these. Um, so.
Well, if we could just cover that question, it just seems odd that we would have spent the exact amount. I I guess I was wondering if perhaps it went over budget and we used the full authorization um and, you know, needed more money, so um you know, when we when we get the update, if you could, if we could follow up on that. All right, um. Flood Control Study, any questions? Ms. Marmian?
Thanks. Um, yes, this item is on page five. This was authorized in twenty-twenty-one. Um, but it doesn't appear to have been started yet. Can you give us a sense of timing on this and um if circumstances have changed or um sort of an explanation for the delay?
Yeah, my recollection is that this is uh this, I believe, will be part of a kind of a larger initiative to be more efficient about how we do these studies. There was um, one, uh, there there was an ARPA project for um uh, under the category of resilience uh, for four hundred thousand, I believe, and this would be another uh another project along the same lines, and so we're grouping all these together in terms of uh, getting approval for the the company to come out and do these studies. So that there would be, and my understanding is that there are four um, four, I'll say phases to this or four sections of the shore that would be um, that this would be uh applied to, including uh, Penfield for the work that's gonna need to be done in Penfield. There has to be some a study of uh wave activity there and uh, and so the, these are, they're kind of all being consolidated into one, and so that's why nothing, that's why nothing's been spent on it yet. That's that's my understanding, so we'll take them all as a whole and knock them out uh one at a time, each of the four different phases or sections of the shore.
Okay, thank you. I just, just as a follow-up, also on page five, there are a number of um, items, road safety improvements, the Congress Street Bridge Design, culvert repair Reef Road. Um, again, timing-wise, all of these were approved, I believe, in twenty-twenty-one, but um, no progress has been made or there's no money has been spent as of yet. Can you give us a sense again of why that would be and the potential timing looking forward?
Do you you want to skip ahead to those? Um.
Uh, they're all on page five of the backup.
So.
There's the Black Rock Turnpike Design, Road Safety Improvements, Congress Street Bridge Design, and the Culvert Repair on Reef Road.
Yeah, we, I think we'd have to get more information on each one of these. They're, you know, they're all different and um, my recollection with with some of the bridge and and road projects was that they may have been tied to um, they may have been tied to a grant, um, which is not totally in our control, and so we are reliant on uh whatever entity, whether it's the state or whomever is uh providing the grant to uh for their approvals. So they they may fall into that category, but I'm not certain. We'd have to um, we'd have to have um, other department heads talk about these things individually.
All right, it would be great to get an update on where we are if we're waiting for a grant approval, just to know that that's the holdup.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right, so we uh the only one in the middle there that we skipped over was townwide guardrail and fencing, but we talked about that in relation to ARPA, and that was the one that I made reference to where we had a two hundred thousand dollar authorization in both places. Um, and Mr. Schmidt explained that, so uh the fire uh pumper, any questions on that? Mr. Curly?
Yep, uh, thank you, Laurie. Um, yeah, Jared, on this one, it looks like most of the funding has been expended. Uh, no outstanding encumbrances. Um, only just a little less than thirty thousand dollars left. Is this project complete? And if so, um, what would happen to the uh, balance, the remaining thirty thousand?
Yeah, again, I hadn't had a chance to talk to the fire chief about this, so we have to uh connect with him to get an update on it.
Okay. If it were complete.
Standpoint, though, can you, can you answer from a process standpoint?
Yeah, that's, I guess, if it, let's assume that it was complete and this thirty thousand was sitting there, would it would you guys sweep that at some point? What what happens to that money?
Um, yeah, that's a a good question. I think that would um it it may be, I, with an amount like that, it may uh, we'd have to talk to bound council, but it'd probably get reallocated to something else.
Okay. And and while we're.
I I can get you a more definitive answer.
That that'd be helpful, thank you. And then I guess uh same, while we're on this page, the I have the same question on the Pine Creek uh Park Playground. Looks like most of the project is complete, maybe not, not ninety-six percent, but um just curious if it, that one's um complete and if so, what would happen to the balance, but that can be a follow-up. Thank you.
Yeah.
And when you're following up on that one, Pine Pine Creek, could you just let us know when that one was authorized? Because again, I'm I'm struggling with the population of data we have here. I I didn't see that one being authorized in the last two years, but it is on this report, so um, you know, it would be helpful again to to validate how this data was pulled and make sure that we're, you know, that we know what we're looking at here and that we're not missing anything. Um, so when you follow up, if you can let us know that as well.
Yep.
Okay, Lake Mohegan Splash Pad Replacement, um. Mr. Curly?
Yeah, I guess this one would kind of dovetail back to the question that you had asked earlier. Um, Laurie, about the uh Police Department HVAC, just it's 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 using all of the funds and granted, not, they're not all expended, some of it's just encumbered, but I'm curious si- same outstanding question for anything that fits that kind of characterization, whether the project is expected to go over budget um or or if so, you know, how does that balance um get handled?
And and maybe from a process standpoint, again, Mr. Schmidt, you can get back to us on this. If it did go over budget, how how is that accounted for? I mean, would we expect to see um, you know, an expenditure here and then a negative balance or, uh, you know, how is how is that even accounted for?
Yeah, I mean, it would depend on the size. Sometimes we can find uh a couple thousand dollars somewhere else to fill a gap like that, just it just depends.
But I guess what I'm asking is, would would, let's say the Lake Mohegan Splash Repic- Replacement costs a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Would I, would I see in here that we spent one sixty and it was ten thousand over and you could take the cash somewhere else? Or are you charging the extra ten thousand dollars against an other the line somewhere?
Uh. Yeah, I, again, I think it would depend on what the decision was made. If we if we um were able to or or needed to get a approval for to spend additional money out of this account, then we would add it to this account. If uh, if it came out of another account, we would hit another account.
Okay, I, maybe maybe Caitlin can um help us with this too next time. I, you know, I don't love that answer. I think if we were over budget on a line item to just charge the differential to a different line item rather than showing you know, keeping it, keeping the uh, the spending attached to the appropriate line item and then truing up the uh over and unders in another fashion. That that just doesn't seem right to me, so um, let's let's follow up on that item and maybe uh maybe Caitlin can take us through that next time.
Yeah, like I said, it would depend.
Um, well, again, I don't love that answer either. I feel like we should probably have a policy around how we account for these things, but that's just my opinion. Mr. Walsh, you have a, you have a question?
Yes, um, so on the fire station rehabilitation, where it says the two hundred and fifty and then minus two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on adjustment, there's no expenditures. I believe that we removed that because we s- we had the ARPA money for the five hundred thousand.
Yes, that was formally deauthorized.
That was deauthorized, right.
That was deauthorized, okay, is that, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Okay, I'm gonna, so we've got for roof replacement, we have Gould Manor. Any questions on Gould Manor? Uh, we have uh the fire alerting and radio equipment. Questions on that item? Mr. Curly?
Yeah, and and Jared, I I don't, you you mentioned it already that you were hoping to get updates from the department head, so I don't want to put you on the spot, but this I'm just curious, I, my recollection on that that one was um, there was some time sensitivity to it. Um, just curious if it was, if it's complete.
Yeah, we'll talk to the chief.
All right. Talked about Roger Ludlow Duck Farm Road. Any questions on that item? Okay, I see none. Burr, Fairfield Ludlow, we talked about those with Mr. Papa George. Um, underwater bridge respect inspection, questions? Okay, self-contained breathing apparatus, um, questions on that item? Okay, there are um, the next several that I'm seeing here, and this is on page twelve. Uh, they, it looks like these fall into the same category where they are uh, one hundred percent complete and the amounts spent are precisely to the dollar, the amount of the authorization, so these are ones where we really should get get an answer back on how the heck this stuff is getting accounted for.
Which ones are you talking about?
Um. So page twelve?
Yeah. There's been nothing spent on a lot of.
I'm sorry, did I get that wrong? I got that wrong. I got that backwards. Hundred percent open, okay, never mind. Just the other ones we said previously. Um. Lake Mohegan Ida Restoration. Uh, did we get the FEMA grant on that one, Mr. Schmidt? Do you know?
Um, I think there's, I think they are still working uh on that. I'm not sure that we've I don't believe that we've officially gotten money from them yet, but I would have to check on that.
Okay, you could let us know on that. Uh. I'll just ask, anybody else have any questions on this uh, this page here thirteen? This includes the Parks and Rec Projects. Mr. Curly?
Yeah, I just uh wanted to confirm the Jackie Durrell uh upgrades. Is that complete at this stage?
Um, I believe that's complete. Uh, or, hold on. Yeah, no, I I don't think anything's been done there yet. Or at least, at least according to this information. That's the way this is reading. But Anthony could, Anthony could provide that information.
I, yeah, I I may have had my this wrong in my notes. I thought she, they were trying to get that done before the closing of Penfield, which is scheduled for next month. Um. But perhaps they were waiting till the end of the season, but um, yeah, clarification on that would be helpful.
Yep.
Okay, um, page fourteen, uh Commerce Drive Highway Improvement. Questions on this item? Okay, just, Mr. Schmidt, if you could get back to us on this one, I I don't recall uh, this and actually the next page too, both of these Commerce Drive Projects. Um, if if you could let us know when they were authorized, I I didn't see authorizations for these in the past two years, so these might be older, but then again, I'm you know, that leads back to the question of how this list was pulled.
Yeah, Commerce Drive was in uh twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, in the uh, sorry, in the in the ca- it would have been done in the calendar year twenty-two, but for fiscal year twenty-two. I mean, calendar year twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay, can you get, maybe just get us an author, a meeting day? I I did actually go back and look and I I didn't see that one, so I thought it might have been older, so if you can get back to us on that one, that's helpful. Both of those, actually. Um.
Yeah, the total authorization was three point seven million. It's all um, it's all grant money. It's all supposed to be grant money.
Got it, okay. Yeah, just just let us know the date if you can. Um, all right, if we if we move to the next page, page sixteen, there are a variety of projects on this page that are um, that were just approved as part of the um as part of what we did in May, I think, of this year, so there's not much activity on these. Does anyone have any question on these items? This is the Townwide Facility Systems Upgrade. Uh, we did agree to get a separate update on that since that was a blanket authorization. We've got the Emergency Radio Project there. Um, I guess the question on that, or is that um that's seven million with a three and a half million dollar grant. Did that grant come in and and I know there was some talk about About uh the notion that we might get more grant money, do you have, do you know anything about that one?
Uh no, that's another one I'll have to talk to the uh police chief about and see where that's at. Um I I'm fairly certain that we haven't gotten the the three point five million in grant money yet.
Okay. All right, so does anyone have any question about these that were just authorized a couple months ago? All right. Okay, um any other questions? On this list, I I I do have two questions, Mr. Schmidt, of things that are not on this list. One of which is um. The bond authorization we did for the ECC back in March twenty one, we increased that. Up to about four million dollars, I don't, I didn't see that on the list. And then the other one was the hardening project that I talked about before, I we we increa- you know, we increased that authorization in June, and that's not on the list either. So if you could um. If you could follow up on on those items as well, and 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 we could figure out a way before we get an update on this again, to sort of audit this list and make sure it's. Complete, that would be helpful, Mr. Walsh, I apologize, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I I would have uh, you know, when we, when you and I talked about this, um we talked about just doing the last two years, so that's, that's why it didn't go back any further.
Yeah, those, the two I just mentioned were within the last two years, though, as I said, the ECC financing, I have an authorization in March twenty one. And the hardening project was in June of this year, so that's where the confusion arises. Um. Mr. Walsh, you had a question?
Uh yeah, we probably won't have it tonight, but I think I have a question for for Bill Hurley on the um. The Duck Farm Bridge. Is this just the engineering cost of three point seven? Three point seven million, cause only a hundred and thirty seven thousand spent, cause the roads closed. And the project doesn't seem to be moving very swiftly.
That's the whole project, and um ag- again, that's probably, that's one where it's all uh sta- state grant money. Um and so. Yeah, we're kind of at their mercy when it comes to that.
Okay.
But yeah, we can, you know, a- absolutely, we can, we'll have him there for uh, you know, any additional questions that you might have.
Uh Mr. Schmidt, would it be possible to get a a format of this report? Um similar to the ARPA report where we have a written status next to each item so that. We don't have to ask questions about ones that are self-explanatory?
Uh.
I think particularly as we go forward quarter to quarter, um that's gonna be helpful, that way people don't have to refresh their memories. Um you know, cause I I would imagine that on some of these, we uh. You know, some some of the other ones on the ARPA list were self-explanatory because there were explanations, so I I think that would be helpful here, if we could.
Yeah, and if, you know, if we ha- if we had more time, we would have, we would have done that.
Yeah, well, I I hear you, and I I hear you keep saying that, but that's the purpose of this meeting, so that, you know, we've spent hours here. I wouldn't have wanted to spend this many hours at a quarterly review meeting, and we certainly couldn't have done it during a capital projects workshop, so. We get the questions out of the way, and now we know. You know, we've got questions about what's included, what's not included, you know, what kind of explanations to get back, so we get through it and and we'll, you know. Hopefully, we can, when we get this back at the quarterly meeting, we can spend a fraction of the time, so I appreciate you going through it.
And we're, we're also um two things going, that are going on now that are gonna be helpful to us. For, you know, for us internally in tracking these things is. Um you know, in the in the budget, we included funding for two positions that were. Um project managers, and so they um they'll be helpful in. Uh keeping it ongoing, keeping a track of the projects, and also looking into. Uh different programs, uh IT programs that we can use to track the programs as well, so track the projects as well. So um that's, that's in in progress.
Did we also have a um another accountant in the budget uh for the uh? For DPW, or maybe they got moved into finance, I can't remember.
It got moved into finance, and currently I don't have space for that person, so. Um there are. Uh three hundred fifty boxes of files downstairs that uh need to get moved out, so I can shift some. Other things around in the office to make uh make room for. Uh make room for another person, uh have another station in my department to house that person.
So we haven't hired anyone yet?
Nope.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board on on any of any of what we discussed tonight, or anything else that you'd like to get? Uh for the quarterly review on these items? Okay, all right, Mr. Schmidt, do you, I'm I'm assuming you have a list of the open questions?
I do.
Okay, terrific, all right, thank you, everyone. Okay, so. With that. Let me bear with me a moment. Let me just move back. All right, so I think that's it for item three, so we will move to item four to hear, consider, and act on any. Communications, Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything for us?
Um just a a quick update on the uh di- WPCA digester. Situation, um that that came up in the last couple meetings, and I know uh Mr. Walsh um. Had had uh asked about a an adjuster. You know, us hiring our own adjuster, and so we have, we have done that, uh we contacted an adjuster, so he is uh. Working on uh working closely with uh any activity around that, um. We went out to uh out to bid. For the cleaning of the digester and uh are finalizing the the winning bid on that now.
For that update, Mr. Schmidt?
You're welcome.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Walsh. Okay, uh any any other uh? Questions from from board members? Okay, all right, well, wi- with that, um we can move on to item five, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Curly, seconded by Mr. Walsh. In favor? All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, good night.
Thanks all, have a good night.
Night.
Good night.